Good afternoon, everyone. We have a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. Today is Monday, November 3rd, 2025. Time is now 4:30. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the Open Public Meetings Law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the Press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council, posted on the City website and City Hall bulletin board. Notice is hereby provided that City Council meetings are audio recorded and/or video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Mullock?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillen-Schwarz?
Here.
City Manager Dietrich?
Here.
Deputy Manager Riggs?
Here.
And Deputy Clerk Turner?
Here.
We have one resolution is 310-11, 2025. A resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-12. This is to discuss the Atlantic City Electric Work Order for relocation of electric poles and overhead lines relating to the new police station and the city manager position.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
No second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
Public Portion Mayor?
Is anyone here wishing to speak on this resolution? Seeing none, we can close public comment and go into closed session. The time is 4:34.
...
...
Good evening, everyone. We are coming out of a closed session and need to adjourn that closed session. We will be adding one addition to the agenda. Clerk, could you?
Yeah, there'll be a resolution added to the regular meeting agenda. We'll detail that when we speak up there.
Okay, great. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, with that, we will open up our regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. Today is Monday, November 3rd, 2025. The time is now 5:35. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the Open Public Meetings Law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the President of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council, posted on the Cape May City website and Cape May City Hall Bulletin Board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio-recorded and/or video-streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Mullick?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillenshaw?
Here.
City Manager Dietrich?
Here.
Deputy Manager Riggs?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Turner?
Here.
And council, we have one addition to the agenda this evening. It's 319-11, 2025. Resolution authorizing work order for Atlantic City Electric for the relocation of electric poles and overhead lines for construction of the new police station.
Do I have a?
Motion to add to the regular agenda?
Thank you. Do I have a motion to add?
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second.
Second. Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Any deletions or other additions, council?
Any deletions, council?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, up to updates in old business.
Updates, old business. City Manager?
Thank you. On the agenda we had for the Employee of the Month, unfortunately, Logan could not be with us this evening, so when I, when she's going to be available, we'll have her come to a future meeting and we'll recognize her at that moment. Couple of updates I wanted to talk to council about. We have posted last week about the dog park being closed. That's in advance of starting work on the new police station headquarters building. I've also getting follow-up questions of, okay, we've kind of built most of the new dog park. We haven't, I would ask council for a full opening of that yet because they've installed the fence a little bit too high, so small dogs can kind of get in there, get out of there, maybe get stuck underneath the fence. And so, I know some people have probably already been using it. We haven't locked it up because I don't want people just trying to climb the fence and get in. But it's not officially open, but the future home is very close, and I've been working with the contractor on getting that open. In regards to the police station headquarters, we've announced that the groundbreaking is going to be on November, Wednesday, November 12th at 3:30 PM, and that's when we'll be doing the official groundbreaking of the police station headquarters. You've probably seen they've, the contractors put up some construction fencing just to kind of start the process, but you will see the contractors start to mobilize in there in the coming weeks. We have scheduled for budget hearings. I know clerk's office will be putting those out to advertise, but we're looking at Thursday and Friday, November 13th and 14th, starting at 9:00 AM each morning. We've almost finalized the schedule, but after, by the time that we have it advertised, I'm sure we'll be able to have that, the full list of the calendar as far as the schedule to be able to post on the city website. And I know that back in the spring, we talked about having a recycling update. Public Works Superintendent is on vacation this week, so we have it, have him penciled in to come in and have a discussion with a memo at the next meeting to kind of give an update on the recycling. And that's all I had this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. City Solicitor?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
City Council, any updates or old business? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to ordinances for second reading.
We have ordinance 580-2025, an ordinance to update the uniform salary and classification plan for the Department of Personnel Positions in the City of Cape May with a public hearing scheduled for this evening, Mayor.
Okay. Is this, are we taking?
We're going to table this one, so, City Clerk, if we could table that?
Sure. So, I don't know if you guys want to undertake any discussion or maybe let the public know that you intend to maybe make some
Yes.
changes and bring it back at the next meeting to reintroduce. Is that my understanding?
Yes. Well, we're going to, Councilwoman Baldwin and I will be meeting with Mr. Dietrich, making some changes, and then figuring out where the timing is to be able to bring it back hopefully the next meeting. If not, we may wind up tabling it based on the timing until after the first of the year. So, we will keep you informed.
Sure.
As to the status.
So, I believe generally, historically, when this has happened, we've already published for a public hearing this evening. There might have been people to come to comment on that. If council's interested in still holding a public meeting or a public hearing, obviously knowing that we might be bringing back a different version of this.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance 580? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, and please know that it will be coming back to you. With that, can I, do I have a motion to table this?
Table indefinitely. It would be my recommendation.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
And indefinitely means that we're going to have to reintroduce anyway, right?
Yeah. Depending on the state. I'm going to let Chris handle that one.
All right, so if, if the intent was to table it for purposes of considering some changes within the calendar year and maybe considering second adoption, I would say let's table it to the next meeting. But if we anticipate this taking longer than maybe one or two meetings, we're running into the end of the year, and we should just table indefinitely. And in that case, we would reintroduce whatever
Version.
Whatever amended or changed iteration of this comes.
We should know by the end of this week where we stand, so we will let.
And I just would say, we really need to introduce something to get a lot of the bargaining units in line, just so that we're in compliance for our audit for the end of the year.
I'm going to work with you one sometimes this week.
The benefit of maybe just tabling to the next meeting is that we can let everybody know that this version may be considered for adoption with maybe some changes at the next meeting. And if you want to make those at the table, we may be able to get an adoption under the wire before the end of the year. You'd of course have to republish any changes at the, after the next meeting, but it would kind of keep it in queue for adoption.
Is that the intention of your motion?
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion to table to the next meeting. We have a second. Any other questions or comments?
Just the next meeting is Monday, November 17, just so everyone knows, because of the League Conference that week.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we ready?
Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Okay. And we have the public portion on the resolutions. Mayor?
Is anyone here wishing to speak on resolutions on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll close public comment on resolutions.
Anything to remove from the consent agenda this evening, Council?
Anything to remove, Council?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to remove 312, please.
Okay. Anything else, Council? Okay.
And I believe there might be some abstentions for minutes. Do you, would you like to go over those? Councilmember Meyer, shall I?
Yeah, would you please?
Yes. So, it looks like Councilmember Meyer is going to abstain from the regular meeting minutes dated October 7, as well... Nope, you can vote on the next one. So, just October 7. Okay?
Thanks.
All right. Do I have a motion on the, on the...
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Thank you.
Yep.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
With the absten, oh geez, abstention.
For October 7.
I'm sorry, yes.
All good. Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
All right, going back to 312-11, 2025, resolution providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue in the budget pursuant to Chapter 159. This is for the Cape May County Open Space for Harperview Park.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
No.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
All right. And on to the regular agenda is 319-11, 2025, a resolution authorizing work order for Atlantic City Electric for the relocation of electric poles and overhead lines for construction of a new police station.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Any new business, Council?
New business? City Solicitor?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
City Manager, new business?
Just one thing I wanted to update. This afternoon, we received our NJDEP permit for the construction of the new water plant today. So, that allows us to actually, one of the last permits that we still need, I think we still need a CAFRA permit, but that's one of, that's the technical permit for all the nuts and bolts and schematics and how the plant is constructed permit, but we still need a CAFRA permit that's...
Excellent news, though, and great work on that. That's obviously extremely important, so. City Clerk, any updates?
I did just mention, but to reiterate, the next meeting is Monday, November 17 at 5:30 p.m. due to the League of Municipalities Conference. The rest of the week up in Atlantic City. Also, obviously tomorrow's Election Day, so get out and vote, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. That's it, Council.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Baldwin?
Just a reminder, Jazz Fest this weekend, and that's all, Mayor.
Nice. Yeah, that's fun. Councilman Bodnar?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Meyer?
No, thank you.
Wow, okay. I'll just say, go out and vote if you haven't voted yet. All right. And what were the times again for voting tomorrow?
6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
And the ballot boxes are still up, too, if you have a vote by mail, until 8:00 p.m.
Thank you, City Clerk.
No problem.
With that, we'll open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on any and all matters, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Stacey Shan, 928 Columbia Avenue. My first question has to do with the Jacob Jones Memorial. Have we gotten anywhere with that? They have a new spot on where they want to put it. And one of the reasons why I'm asking this is because I received an email saying that, I guess there was activity or a group of a couple council people, and Mr. Becker, I was going to say Bodnar, I knew it wasn't Mr. Becker, down at the Cove. And I just wanted to know if the Cove is now a new spot that they're looking at to put the Jacob Jones Memorial?
That meeting was, that was down at the Cove was two months ago, maybe two and a half months ago, and that was regarding the Promenade Reconstruction Project and had nothing to do with the Cove project.
Okay, just, like I said, I just received...
And we have no, we have no new update as far as that project moving forward yet.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
My next question has to do with a topic that will be coming up, having to do with the new, with the contract with West Cape May Police patrolling over there. So, I'm just calling, or I'm actually bringing this up because of the difference in what West Cape May pays compared to the taxpayers of Cape May. West Cape May taxpayers pay roughly $550,000 for the police to patrol in West Cape May. At the same time, Cape May pays West Cape May to use the substation over there around $45,000 for the year. So, roughly, West Cape May pays about $500,000 a year for police coverage in their city. Meanwhile, in Cape May, salary and wages are around $2.1 million. Other expenses are around $250,000. County dispatch is $195,000. Now, this is retirement for fire and police, so I know it's a combined, so that was one point, around 1.3 million, so I would say about $700,000. What's not included in the budget I could find was health care for the police. Cars and equipment were not included. Also, any lawsuits that the city might acquire because of the police patrolling in West Cape May, we pay for. And of course, you know, anything else that comes along the way. So, comes out to be around, and this is rough, but probably more than that, $3.4 million that the city taxpayers pay for police protection, not including the $8 million police building that we're going to be building soon. So, my point is that when you go for these contracts, or not contracts, but shared services with West Cape May, just keep in mind the difference in what is being paid between the city taxpayers of Cape May and the West Cape May taxpayers. Roughly, if there's four patrolmen on, and that's one patrolman in West Cape May and three in Cape May, that's 25%. West Cape May's not even close to being 25% of that $3.4 million budget. Thanks.
So, Ms. Shan, just to respond, and I'll just give this very briefly. There is currently, there has been for the past several months, and I'm the council liaison, a work group on the shared services agreements for police services, both on, in West Cape May as well as Cape May Point. We have completely deconstructed the entire police budget and rebuilt it around health care expenses, pension expenses, operating expenses, and all expenses associated with police services, and have presented a budget to them on what the appropriate cost share should be as we enter into a new contract. What has occurred in the past, unfortunately, was not based on objective metrics. This is all based on objective metrics, and so I can assure you that the numbers will look different in the future, only because we're doing it in a much more transactional way.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public this evening?
Good evening. Jules Roush, 1010 New York Avenue. I'd like to make a few comments, if I may, please, on the workforce housing, which I understand is coming up at the next meeting. First, I think it's incumbent on the city to notify everyone that is in the C-1 district to receive a notice or some, some basic information as to what this change means, because it's a significant change. And as a result of that, I think they should know what that is. And I would suggest that it be made prior to the 17th, which was a hearing, so that if they have a comment, they would be able to come and make their comments known. As I've said in the past, I think one of the things that's very disappointing about this entertainment of a change this significant is that there's been no, to my knowledge, no study by the planning board of the numbers that deal with the properties within the C-1 district. Frankly, I was not prepared to talk about anything other than the mall itself. There are roughly 55 two-story buildings in the mall area. Of those, 21 have a third floor. There's approximately 130 parking spaces around the mall. If you take the numbers of 55 buildings and you equate that into some form of how many apartments there may be, and if you discount it by 50%, which I've done, you can come up with somewhere close to 33 apartments. Of those 33 apartments, they're permitted to have four persons per apartment. As you know, it's 550 square feet of habitable area. That could equate to, you know, an increase in people of, you know, we don't know how many, but certainly somewhere between 50 and 100, and maybe even more than that. None of those are required to have a parking space. I think it's incumbent on the city to evaluate what kind of impact is that going to have if you have that many new people living in an area where the most important or the most critical issue for the entire town is parking. You're loading up an area that's heavily dense, that's heavily populated by single-family houses, which already, and I know some people that live on Windsor as an example, and they have a terrible time parking anywhere close to their house. There are many residents that haven't had the opportunity to park on their street, and if we throw in another 50 to 100 residents in the center of town, the impact that they're going to have is significant. I think you need to look at that. I'm frankly really disappointed that there hasn't been a study done to look at the impact of not only the mall, because you've now thrown into this equation of including the entire C-1 district. And I have no concept, frankly myself, of how much impact that additional area may be. I think frankly, this is a rush to judgment. I think you've taken a subject of workforce housing, which obviously we all know is a problem. It's not just unique to Cape May. It's frankly throughout the country, more so in resort areas, but housing is a difficult subject. And we're going to compound our problem, but the solution that we're seeking is to take an area and say, we're going to call this workforce housing slash long-term occupancy. Now, I understand from the last meeting that I watched of the planning board, that the chairman of the planning board has asked that the title be changed from, to include workforce housing along with long-term housing, that it's be significantly different when you add to that long-term housing. What does that really mean? That means that every apartment that is in the C-1 district is going to be potentially long-term housing with no parking. That means that we could, we all know that the short term, 90 days or less, is not in good interest to the city, because that's too much turnover. However, long-term housing is from 91 days on. So, we could have theoretically in a given year, a number of turnovers in a given apartment. And with that comes a lot of changes. Are these apartments going to be furnished? Or are they going to be vacant, where every time you get a change of a tenant, you're going to have a move of furniture in and out?
Mayor?
We all know the difficulties that exert, that exist with loading zones on both sides of the mall, the back sides of the mall. It's murder with the deliveries just to the commercial businesses. I raise these questions because I think it's very, very important. I think as a result of fact, that there's not been a study done to determine the validity or the basic importance of workforce housing, but I think without having done a study, it becomes arbitrary and capricious. It's not, it's, there's no basic understanding of why we should do this. When you look at the definition of workforce housing, which I've done in a number of different areas, even the Urban Land Institute refers to workforce housing, and added to that is not only workforce housing, but the economics of making workforce housing available. Our definition does not refer to anything dealing with economics. So, the apartments, when they become available, they become available at market rate, or whatever the property owner deems desirable on his behalf. So, I submit to you that it will be very difficult for, quote, "a workforce housing individual" to pay the kinds of rents that the area will command. I frankly feel that we have gone beyond what is reasonable to give up the provision of parking. I don't feel that there's an overall benefit that's to be gained, and quite frankly, this ordinance really, in my view, is a subterfuge to enable the commercial and investment community to benefit by having the ability to convert their second and third floors into apartments which are revenue-producing. It will not solve the workforce housing. They will only benefit themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Seeing none, we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.